Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Municipalities of Monroeville's Citizen Night as well as the Council Work Session. Today is Thursday, June 9th, 2016. Approximately 7:00 PM, we'll full kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll grab the sheets. Anybody on the other one, Tim? Rick McGrath, if you'll please come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name for the record, and you live in Monroeville. You already signed in on that.
My name is Rick McGrath, and I live on Wiltshire Circle in Monroeville. I've been a Monroeville resident for over forty years. I've lived on Wiltshire Circle for thirty years and a few days. I just, I was at your April meetings, two meetings in April, and I'd like to tie up a couple loose ends that are hanging out there that got me concerned. I'd like to start with McClure Road. I understand that we got the money from the Water Authority to repair, repay McClure Road, and I imagine, it seemed to me like you've probably had the money for four or five months, and I understand that there were contracts awarded to a contractor to do the repaving, and I was wondering, the contract that we had them sign, was there a start date or a finish date?
Mr. Hughes, just open-ended.
There is a start date, but we have to wait for Public Works to do some additional preparation to the road before they can start.
You have an idea, Paul, for...
No, I do not. I mean, we're sort of at the liberty of Public Works. They have to get their work done first.
When I asked about it a couple months ago, Paul informed us that we had to wait till school was out for one, because they don't close the road while the buses are still running.
The way things are going here, school may be back in, is what I'm concerned about.
It'll be done before school's open.
Okay. Well, that being said, you've been neglecting McClure Road the way it is right now. There are serious potholes, at least a dozen of them, that have been there for months right now, and I'm under the impression that maybe you guys are not taking care of it because it's going to be repaved, but right now, it's definitely a hazard. It's a safety hazard. Cars swerving in and around to miss the potholes. Somebody needs to go out there and look at it and fix the, fix the potholes. Can we, can we have somebody look at that?
I'll have somebody look at it tomorrow, Rich.
That'd be great. The contracts are awarded, and I tried to get some specifics. I went on the council, the borough website, the municipality website, to look at the minutes for April, and of course, this is June, and there are no minutes posted yet for the April meeting. Is that standard, that it should take two or three months, or?
Shouldn't be.
The April minutes are not on the website, you're saying, Rich?
No, sir.
Okay. The April minutes were approved last month. If they're approved, they should be on the website. I'll look into that.
Mr. Mayor, I could speak to that. Sometimes it, they just lag behind a little bit. I should have them on immediately.
He'll, he'll address that.
No, that's just, that's just a matter of putting them, that has nothing to do with you, Sharon, it has to do with just putting them on the website, that's all. Give them Andy, and Andy puts them on, that's all.
After approval.
Yeah, after approval, yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, that being said, I have to go by memory. There were two parts to the bid that went out. One was for like $130,000, or, and another one where they churn it up and pulverize it, and we put it down.
For McClure Road, right.
Was $13,000?
I believe that was the, I believe.
Plus or minus. I'm wondering, what does that entail? When I see that, I think the proper term was full-depth reclamation, and I got the feeling, the impression that they, they basically dig up the road surface, pulverize it.
They mill it up.
Put it back down, and then pave over it, so...
Pretty much, that's it.
McClure Road, I didn't measure it, but it's gotta be a quarter of a mile long. It might be a half a mile long.
Oh, it's longer than a quarter mile.
How can they do that for $13,000? And I think this is a company out of Detroit, from what I remember.
Their home offices in Detroit. They have a local office here. They specialize in full-depth reclamation. That's their business. It's $13,000 to do the full-depth reclamation. Then the paving, then the paving company will come in and do the paving of it.
Are they gonna do this from Mountain View Drive over to Frankstown Road?
No, it'll go from just after Wiltshire Circle to McClure.
Wait, wait, Wiltshire Circle doesn't intersect with...
Oh, I'm sorry, Verlinden.
Verlinden, okay. From Verlinden to?
A little further up from Verlinden. Basically, where Mr. and Mrs. Lippincott used to live.
I don't know them, but, that's, is that, they're gonna do it all the way out to Mountain View, where it intersects with Mountain View?
Yes.
For $13,000, wow.
It's their business, I mean...
I can't imagine having the equipment there that long. I'll be looking forward to seeing that. I mentioned the potholes, okay. So, now, the second part of my request is to talk about Wiltshire Circle. If you'll recall, we have transverse cracks in our streets, and at the last meeting, I was here in April, the second meeting in April, Mr. Duncan indicated that it would be started that week, and the next day, I got a call from Mr. Adams, Mike Adams, and he met with me in front of my house, and he, you had asked him to give me a call, and he did call me first thing in the morning. And he said, Rick, he says, you know, this isn't gonna happen this week. He says, my guys are, have other jobs, they're on other jobs, and they're not just sitting around waiting for something to do. And I says, I don't have a problem with that. He says, maybe next week. I said, that would be great, you know, but we gotta get it done. Well, a month went by, and didn't hear from anybody, didn't see anybody. Three weeks ago, all of a sudden, machines showed up, and they start carving out these cracks, and there was a, on one side of Wiltshire, there was a storm pipe that was put in or something and repaved years ago, and it was in very bad repair, and so they dug that out, and they started filling it back in. Well, they, of what they carved out, they asphalted about ninety percent of it, and there's ten percent of it that's sitting there with a hole in the pavement, and they just walked off the job. They didn't explain anything to anybody. Where are they? Are they done?
They've had mechanical, they've had mechanical problems with the, I don't wanna say the skid loader, that's not the skid loader, they're having mechanical problems.
Echo, or milling machines.
Not the, not the milling machine.
Regardless, they had mechanical.
They've had, both of the machines are broken down, Rich, that's why.
Both the machines. Communications really takes a lot of stress off people in the neighborhood, particularly me, because they've seen me on television, and, you know, for some reason, they think I'm the spokesperson, and I hope that's not true.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, I don't have to say, Rich, you are.
Definitely not, but because McClure's in the same condition, and Wiltshire is anyhow.
But I agree with you, and then, Tim, you know, maybe what we should do is, is that when we're doing that, and that does, I think that's certainly the point to call, and I know it can fall through the cracks, but...
No, Rich, I mean, I know, well, first of all, you were here last month, okay? So, Mike went out and talked with you, and, because his guy, other guys were on the job, and then what happened a week after that, in the beginning of May, in the beginning of May, what everybody knows, we've had a lot of rain, okay? And I'm pretty sure Mike mentioned that to you, too. I mean, they couldn't do anything out there because, you know, we've had a lot of rain. So, once the rain subsided, they started, and they went out there, and I think they started, Mike told me, two and a half weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken, is about when they started. And I didn't know the machines had broken down, and I wish I could remember what, it wasn't backhoe. I didn't know that until about two days ago, Mike told me, okay? So, we kind of expected you, we were looking forward to you being here tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Because of that.
All right. And I know there's a Penguin game, so I have one more item. If you'll recall, the last meeting I was at, or the meeting, the first meeting that I was at, I brought up some good points, and then I was on my way to Monroeville along Frankstown Road, and they were paving, AKA Penn Hall Academy, and I brought that up, and somebody says, well, we own that. And I said, no, we don't own it, because I had a copy of the county website, and they said, well, we lease it. And, and Mr. Duncan, and you, Mr. Little, said that we'll look into that, and we'll get back to you. Do we own it? Do we lease it?
We lease it, from my understanding. I haven't seen the lease.
Well, that's, that's what I would, I'm interested in, we're, we're maintaining somebody else's private property, and that could be, that could get out of hand, it could be, well, it is. It's, I'm bringing it up, that's...
Fair statement to say you'll get back to him.
Sure.
In a day or two?
Or three.
Well, yeah.
These are men.
Okay. I just wanted to remind you that that was still an open item in my book, so...
You did a good job.
Yeah, thank you very much, and let's get out of here.
Hey, good job, Rick.
Jim Starr. Please, please state your name for the record, you already signed in.
Jim Starr with Glen Arden Developers, okay. Came up here about a year ago, and said we had, really needed to get a list of what needed to be done to finish the project, and I've been working with Paul and Jamie Storey, and they've been, the communications have been good over this, and we're down to a very, very, very short list. And really, why I'm here, I think Glen Arden's been great for the community. I think it's super development, and I think it's really done a lot for the whole community. And we have ground that are about the same size, right, and right equal to it, and I think we could make, you know, continue that on in Monroeville. Now, one of the items, I just want to talk about one of the items that's on the punch list, and we have, we need to, according to the regulations, I got this note here from Jamie Storey, he says, like, the roads are all acceptable, and, and, but, he said, Paul, you just, I understand that it doesn't necessarily make sense to construct sidewalks, and this is on the undeveloped lots, which might be destroyed during the construction of the lots later, but once again, as staff, we do not have the authority to waive the requirements of completing the sidewalks. So, I'm here asking if we can waive the completing of the sidewalks. There are a couple other developments in Monroeville that don't have the sidewalks on, and one of them is Ridgeview Estates, and there again, if you go to develop any of these lots, the heavy equipment going over it is going to destroy the sidewalks, and then they're gonna have to repave them, or re-pour them in the concrete. It's just not gonna match, for one thing. It's gonna be one type of concrete with another type of concrete. And the other one is this Bel Air Estates, also, there are undeveloped sidewalks on there. So, really, what I'm looking to do is, if we could do something where, you know, we were treated the same way, and that we don't have to put the sidewalks in right now to complete the projects for the acceptance of the road, I mean, that'd be very helpful for us as developers, and...
Are you proposing you would put the sidewalks in when it is developed?
When, when the houses go in, yeah. We, we have the, the, all the lots, and then we sell the lots, and then an owner will come in and put the sidewalks in, is how it works.
Can I ask, where, where is the development?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I must've missed something somewhere.
Okay. Glen Arden is...
Behind Ramsey School.
Behind Ramsey.
Yeah, behind Ramsey, yeah, yeah. It's a higher-end development, and it's, really, I think it's, you know, really great for the community.
Wouldn't this be for the zoning hearing board?
No. Under our curtain ordinance, for roads to be accepted, all the sidewalks have to be installed. Actually, they're supposed to be installed within one year when the roads are paved. There's about thirty-five lots of the, of the plan. I believe there's probably twelve or thirteen lots that the sidewalks are not constructed on. So, he obviously came through, he asked for a punch list, what needs to be done for the acceptance, and this seems to be a stumbling block of, they're bonded with a performance bond, but the ordinance also says they have to be put in before the roads are accepted.
Mr. Ratcher, if you would.
You have the right to waive that, or amend the agreement that you have relative to the sidewalks with this, if council chooses to do so. And there would be a bond that would remain in place.
There is currently a bond in place.
I can't see how it'd be a problem, as long as you're gonna put the sidewalks in when you're done, but that's just me thinking.
Yeah, so we could, so whenever we say the homeowner, then, I guess, or the developer, maybe not you, but whoever would actually develop the property, would put the sidewalk in. Is that a way, we tie that to the occupancy, or how does that get tied into the...
Yeah, the sidewalks would have to be installed at the point of construction of the home. What you find out is that sometimes, some of these developments, certain lots are never built. There never, never is construction on it. Then you have a segment that's missing.
I see. Can we put a time for it?
That creates a problem, too.
Or if, or if a house is built in between two vacant lots, you know, that...
Then there's missing sidewalks.
Yeah, and they'd have to match them up as, as the development comes. It's odd.
Right now, the cost is on the developer, though, and you're, when they propose to do this, then the cost would now be on the homeowner.
No, it's ultimately on the homeowner.
Oh, it is? It gets included into their lot price, I guess?
By way of full disclosure, I live in Glen Arden. When I built my home there, which was about seventeen years ago, I paid to put the sidewalks in. I mean, the cost is passed along ultimately to the property owner.
Okay.
But the road was already there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. The road is there right now, at the property we're talking about, yes.
If we did this, is that, then, are they done? Is everything fulfilled?
No.
Okay.
There are still some items that have to be corrected.
Two minor items.
We're getting, we're getting down to closer.
Paul, could you get us a map of the development as far as which lots are not completed? You have it right there? Which ones are not completed, and which ones are?
Jim, you could just lay it down on, on, right in front of you.
Okay, right here.
It kind of works out that it's in the middle. It's, it's developed at the top, there's a gap, and then it's developed at the bottom. It's kind of in the middle, right, Mr. Starr?
Yeah, yeah, you can, I don't know, can you see the green on there?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So, you can see there is, this whole side has not been developed, okay? It's a high side, and, and then there are two areas, really, here and here, where, you know, you do have blanks, and you do have a small area here, but it doesn't, it's really the end of the cul-de-sac.
Are we assuming any extra liability?
Ask Mr. Ratcher.
No, I, no. I don't, I don't see a liability issue here.
Well, would it be fair, council, to have maybe Mr. Ratcher, maybe work something up for your consideration, and then next week, or if we can't do it that fast next month, this gentleman...
Can I just add one thing? Should there be a time limit, though?
I just asked that.
I don't want to go ten more years.
Yeah, there should definitely be.
And there not be sidewalks there, and we may never have sidewalks.
I agree with that time.
Yeah, because the homeowners that currently are there that have invested into that property, I mean...
Correct.
And that's sort of what we hear, too, is, you know, they have sidewalks to a point, and there's no sidewalks.
Paul, what would be a reasonable timeframe, in your opinion?
Well, the development started in 2003 or '04, Jim, in that era, you know, so we're at 2016. We've been into it for a pretty long time, you know? I think five years might be reasonable time.
May I ask what the other couple small things were?
One of them is the storm water, how the storm water goes into the tension pond. We had a, someone who developed a plan who went away from the specs, and so then there was an issue as far as how the storm water is properly handled. So, we had our engineer, FMG, quality people, calculate this, and they went over with Monroeville, how the storm water should be handled, and would meet the same specifications as far as discharge and that sort of thing. And so, and then, right now, my understanding is Monroeville is having it verified with Chester Engineers, that the water's being handled properly.
That's correct. I mean, we need to verify that it's been rerouted properly.
Thank you.
And then, the only other item would be, once that's done, then we have these ASBILs made, which reflect what's in the pond, and we give it to you as a, as a permanent record, and so we don't want to do that until we get an agreement on how the water's being handled.
Would you be fair, go ahead, Paul, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, Paul, do we have a developers' agreement with Mr. Starr?
We do.
Okay. So, this would be an amendment to the developers' agreement, to the extent that council decides that we should move forward with any amendments.
Is there only one home at the end of the cul-de-sac, or one property that's not done?
Yeah, there's only one property here, yeah, at the end of the cul-de-sac that's not done. It's a great lot, it's a really good lot, and everyone wants a nice lot.
Well, I'm just wondering why that couldn't at least be done, so that finishes that all off. Everything else kind of is more connective, or that's kind of like out by itself?
You see, if you're down there, you just walk up this way, and this person is here, and there is no sidewalk here. It was decided early on that there would be no sidewalk. That's part of the agreement, that on this side of the street, there was, one wasn't needed. And, you know, I could see if you want to, if you wanted to do some kind of compromise, I could see putting one in down here, I'm not crazy about it, and putting one in here.
That, that was my other one.
Yeah, and then, so, it would be for really the people who would be walking, and most of people walk in the street, so, because there's no traffic, but, but, you know, but, you know, maybe doing that and then doing this here, because this whole thing is, this whole side is undeveloped, it's got lots, and I don't know why people aren't in them, I think...
Every home that is developed has a sidewalk.
Correct.
So, you would be willing to do the other side of the street, and down over the other, down further?
This right here?
Yes.
Which street is that, Jim?
This is Arden Drive.
Point to Arden on the map? And then, where's, where's tall trees?
It's here.
Okay. And then Parklea?
Right there.
Okay.
So, they would be willing to do this over here, and this over here, just not that whole one?
Yeah, that whole one, one, it just doesn't, it, it's an undeveloped side of the street, and it, I think it would just look funny to have, you give it down the hill.
Okay, so maybe we, maybe we could look at that as a compromise, then? This is a thought.
If we waive the sidewalk issue for now, how soon will you be able to start the project?
Finish the sidewalks as soon as the contractors can get there.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
As soon as the contractors can get there. I have prices from contractors.
You have to bring your microphone.
I'm sorry. I have, I have prices from contractors, so, yeah, I mean, it, depending on their schedule...
Are you saying three months, six months?
It, it really, oh, yeah, it would definitely be done in that amount of time. Oh, yeah, easily.
Okay, can we put that in the addendum, too?
Sure.
Time-bonded?
Sure.
So, would it be fair, council, then, maybe Mr. Ratcher, Paul, and Jim all kind of work out, and then you guys take a look?
And then present it.
Yes, yes.
Figure out the map as far as, maybe, this area versus that area.
Yeah, and then you guys can...
Doing some of the lots.
Very good.
Fair enough, Jim?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, and Paul, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, ultimately, you probably want the roads accepted before the next winter cycle.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
For the winter maintenance reasons.
All right, you think?
Well, then, you three will get together, then.
Okay, great. And then, when do you want to get together?
Give me a call.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, you're wonderful, yeah.
Okay, I have nobody else signed in, but anybody else would like to address council? This is certainly your time to do so. Sir, if you would kindly sign in and state your name for the record.
Robert Heiss, and I am a resident of Monroeville.
Good to see you, Bobby.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things, and I promise I'll try not to be long-winded, but, in any event, I want to, as a, as a resident in a very busy intersection, how well you know, I'm sandwiched between two intersections, I'm on Route 48, or referred to as Old Haymaker, I got Beatty up one side, I got Logan's Ferry the other side. I, I have to really compliment council, and Mr. Adams, and his people. It's a difficult area to get in and out of, especially when the weather's bad, and I know things have been tough. Money's short, you're doing the best you can, which you are with what you have, but I've been able to get in and out of there, and that I appreciate. There is one issue that I have, and my neighbors have had for years with that intersection. Again, how well you know, Unity Trestle, or Center Road, or whatever you want to call it, at Logan's Ferry and 48, or Old Haymaker, as people would like to call it, it's a breeding ground for accidents. I've gotten to a point, my bedroom window faces that intersection, and I have learned over the years by the squeal of the brakes whether there's gonna be an impact or not. Usually, if you check with dispatch, probably ninety percent of those calls, I'm the one that called him in and went on to assist, because obviously, with the fire department, I'm an EMT. But with that being said, there's one really major thing that has to happen with those two intersections. Last year, tractor-trailer, a long trailer, probably a sixty-footer, heading, whoops, heading from Boyce Park, tried to make a left, or a right, tried to make a right on Logan's Ferry. Jackknifed the truck, ended up against a rather large utility pole with all of the main wires atop of it, and instead of just stopping, he continued to try and maneuver his way around. Long story short, he broke the pole, then all the wires came down, including the main trunk lines for the telephone wires, came down and started hanging across Center Road. With that being said, another tractor-trailer, not paying any attention, came by, grabbed those wires, and now the pole that's in front of my house, which is... those wires, and now the pole that's in front of my house, which is a major utility pole, with all of the 23 KV, 23,000-volt lines on top, all the primaries, all the secondaries, all the telephone trunk lines, really damaged that pole. It put so much tension on that pole that it pulled my telephone wires out, it pulled my cable wires out. I had no power for like 12 hours, ruined everything in my refrigerator and freezer. This isn't the first time something like that's happened. We've had tractor-trailers make left and right turns at both of those intersections, ripping up the property. I mean, the little gray house on the corner, catty corner from me, right at the intersection of Old Haymaker and Center, every time that guy fixes his yard up, every time, it gets torn up. Then the, then the house up from me on Beatty Road, across from the funeral home, same deal. These trucks make these turns, and they rip up the yards.
What are your suggestions, Robert? Suggesting, I'm sorry?
What I'm suggesting is signals, signs, whatever. Can't let those trucks go down there anymore. If they want to make a straight shot down past my house and head down toward Boys Park on that spur, fine. They can't be making turns there anymore. They're just ripping up property, they're causing damage. What's the next thing that's going to happen?
Paul, would it be something that your office would take a look at?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand that, Bob. If they go past your house, they're trying to make the left on the center?
Well, what happens is, if they go past my home, if they go past the house and they want to head down toward Boys Park...
Right.
They just make the turn down that spur. And that's not an issue. But when they try to make a sharp turn, it, anywhere those two intersections, when they try to make a sharp turn...
Right.
They come up over and they rip up property. I mean, for years...
How about if we get you to hook up with him, Paul, and he could show you on-site there? And it'd probably be a little easier than...
It'd be a lot easier.
Well, have Paul come down, and you can give him a little grand tour.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. One other thing, real quick. Again, I want to say, I want to say to you, my observation is that since you folks have taken over, the town's gotten a lot better. It's gotten a lot better to deal with. You don't have as much nonsense going on that went on before. We have businesses moving back into this town and more development, and I need to thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, and rest of council, because you guys are very much for business. We're short of money, that goes without saying. We need more revenue, and we're going to get that as long as we can continue to be more appealing to bringing more businesses in here.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, we'll leave the floor open for anybody that would like to address council. Seeing none, we'll close that proportion of the meeting, and we'll go on our work session, if you will. Before we get into that, council conducted an executive session for personnel litigation reasons before tonight's citizens' night meeting, beginning at 6:15 PM and ended around about 6:55 PM. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at the June 14, 2016 council meeting. Council, if you'll please review the citizens' night meeting of May 5, 2016, the regular council meeting of May 10, 2016, and I know you just, oh, I'm sorry, let's do that.
You get the work session.
Oh, I'm sorry, the work session of May 5, 2016, and I know you just got your regular council meeting of May 10, 2016. We can review that for Tuesday, but any corrections or additions on the May 5 citizens' night or the council work session of May 5, 2016?
No, sir.
Seeing none, moving over to reports of our tax collections. Any additions or corrections, council?
No, sir.
Moving over to payroll report. Any additions or corrections, council? Seeing none, moving over to the list of bills and budget transfers. Tom, we'll start off with you. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Steve?
Nothing, ma'am.
Paul?
No, sir.
Jim?
No, sir.
Ron?
Nothing.
Nick?
No, sir.
And Linda?
No, sir.
Moving down to our consent agenda, new business. Tim, if you would.
Hey, Mayor.
Sir?
Prior to that, can I speak on one thing? I'm not sure that I'd have to put, if I need to put this on the agenda for Tuesday.
Your call, Steve.
Okay, real quick, a few months ago, several residents contacted me in regards to the park program, leader park program at Bellwood and Pioneer Parks, and they asked if we were going to continue that as we have in the past. And I told them that I'd speak to the manager on that subject and get back to them. Well, last month at the council meeting, the manager said that the monies were there and that the program would continue. So I notified, and there was no objection from council, or no questions or objection from council. So I notified the residents that it would continue. Last week, Mr. Little called me and informed me that the majority of council contacted him that they only want to permit one park, so pick one, Bellwood or Pioneer, which I don't understand, but that is their pleasure, I guess. And some of the reasoning was that the numbers don't add up. And I just want for the public to know on the numbers, real quick, this was two program leaders that we've done for years at Pioneer and Bellwood. It's five-hour day that they work from 9:30 to 2:30, 25-hour a week, they make $8 per hour, and it's an eight-week program. So the total for the leader is $1,600 for the eight-week program, which I think, for the bang for your buck, that's not too bad. Now, when they say the numbers didn't add up, on average, you know, I don't know what numbers would add up. On average, Pioneer Park had 10 kids per day, that's a five-hour day, and Bellwood had 15 kids per day. So if this council could tell me what a good number would be, 18, 20, I mean, I don't know. But, long story short, the total for the two programs was, what, 36, $3,200, $3,200 for eight weeks, that keep our kids occupied in those two parks. And again, this was a residence that came to me and asked me, and it's, we've done this for years. You know, I mean, so I don't know, do I need to put that on the agenda for a vote? It's my understanding that a council member went and called around to our council members and got the majority to say, hell, Duncan just won. And for $1,600, you know, I mean, we have a $32 million budget.
Steve, you can put it on for a second? Am I not correct to get it on the agenda for...
Well, if the money's in the budget, it's just a matter of whether or not...
Oh, yeah, as far as putting it on the agenda, just tell me, unless other council members have an objection, I mean, this is a non-voting meeting, unless other council members have an objection why it shouldn't be on the agenda, I'll put it on the agenda, and council can vote on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Democracy in action.
Well, again, we have a $32 million budget, and, you know, this is $1,600, and it's for our kids. I don't know if this was against trying to get at me, but it's, doesn't affect me. It affects the kids in my ward and the residents.
I have a question, Mayor, though.
Sir?
How do you guarantee X amount of children participating in that program? I don't think there's a way. The kids either show up or they don't show up.
Yeah, you don't guarantee it. There was an average. We were asked for an average.
You can't guarantee that, right, right.
There could be 30 kids a day.
Right, right. There could be three kids, but you still need supervision.
The average, as I explained, we're 10 and 15 per day. That's a five-hour day. It's not an eight-hour, 10-hour day. It's a five-hour day, so two kids an hour at the minimum.
Fair statement, it'll be on the agenda.
Okay, very good.
Any comments on that?
If it needs to be, I have an...
I'm just asking for any other comments.
The motion, I'm sitting here thinking on how the motion should read. The motion should read, either you want a park leader at all, or you want one park leader either at Pioneer or Bellwood. So I'll...
When you say all, it was approved for Bellwood and Pioneer.
Correct, we do have, the money is there, there's no doubt about that.
He means both, Steve.
I mean, I don't know what the motion...
The motion should state for both, or just one?
Both.
Or none?
Is there a park leader there now, currently employed?
No, I don't, I don't...
I don't believe the program's started yet. Paul would know that.
I think when school totally gets out, the element, I mean, school probably is out.
Yeah, school's just out.
Okay.
How do you just have one park available, not the second park available? They're miles apart.
Well, okay, I don't want to drag the subject out, but...
I'll catch the motion in a fashion that's either going to be one or two, and I'll put something on the agenda that council can vote on. Okay, because council has the background information. I gave them as far as the attendance down there for the last, I think it's three years, and also the...
But I think there may have been a misunderstanding on the amount.
The amount of kids or money?
The money. I mean, it's $1,600 per leader.
Okay.
Where I heard figures of $7,000 or $5,000.
Well, it was in that line item that has $10,000 in that line item.
Okay, maybe that's a misunderstanding.
Where those, there's other, I mean, there's other items in that lineup, because it's under salaries and wages for that section of the budget, and there was a $10,000 figure in there. So that's, that maybe could be the, I mean, in my conversations with council, it wasn't so much the money, which money is always, money is always an issue, it was more the attendance.
Okay, what, you give me a number that, what the attendance should be. I know, it's 10, 30, is that too little? Okay.
It'd be one, and if council wants to...
But I've never received a phone call or anybody questioned me on it. You know, all of a sudden, you called me and told me that this council, the majority of this council, wants one, rather than the two that was agreed on at last month's meeting. That's all I have.
All right, I'll put a motion on the agenda.
Okay. Any other business, any other comments, council? Okay, Tim, if we'll go to the new business, if you would.
Okay, under new business, under the consent agenda, we have applicants requesting site plan approval to construct a parking lot expansion of 34 parking spaces and associated site amenities, properties located at 4731 William Penn Highway, Allegheny County, Lot and Block 1107 F331, in the C2 Business Commercial District. That's just for the expansion of the parking lot.
Correct.
Jason?
Good evening, everybody. Just one application, as Tim was stating, that it's for the Grace Life Church at 4731 William Penn Highway. This is a proposed parking lot expansion. It is at the two other parcels to the...
Could you just speak into the microphone?
Sure, no problem. This is for two of the, two of the, this is for the, sorry, you got me out of the thought here. This is for the parking lot to the east of the church location on two of their adjacent parcels. They're proposing 34 parking spaces with the proposed site amenities, the site lighting, landscaping, a two-and-a-half-foot retaining wall in the northeast corner of the parking lot. Additionally, they're taking three parking spaces that are closest to the door of the church, the main entrance of the church, and converting those to additional handicap parking spaces. That'll bring them up for a total of, on the entire site, of 109 standard parking spaces and six handicap spaces.
There's currently nothing on that property at this moment, correct?
That is, that is correct, yes.
Any issues with it?
It was reviewed by the planning commission on May 18 and recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, if you would.
Okay, item B is a motion to increase the hourly rate of the following finance personnel due to an increased responsibilities and duty due to the extended absence of a finance employee. And these two employees are Darlene Cole and Michelle Durbin. And the rates, the current rates and new rates are on the agenda.
Questions or comments?
Is the person going to come back?
Yes.
I hope so. As far as I know, I haven't heard any...
This is a temporary.
Temporary.
This is a temporary increase in wages, temporary.
And the wages will go down when the person...
The wages will go back down when the person comes back from leave.
Tim, if you would.
Okay, resolutions. The resolutions for the disposition of records as set forth in the municipal records manual, tax office, and the IT department. This is housekeeping items that we do each year.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Mr. Ratcher?
One ordinance tonight, an ordinance authorizing the proper officials of Monroeville to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the PSSU Local 668 SEIU, representing the municipal clerical workers and emergency telecommunications officers.
Questions or comments, council, on this item before you? Thank you, and then we'll go over to reports of our municipal officials, and Mr. Ratcher, any word with them?
No report.
Tim, I'm going to hold you last. Paul?
No, sir.
Okay, and obviously Sean.
No, sir.
Tim, if you would.
Yeah, just one, one item, getting back to that one motion, I am going to put the word in there, temporary rate increase. Mr. Clary, that's a very good point, I should have put that in a motion, so that's with the consent agenda. So when you vote on that, the word temporary will be in there, okay, for Tuesday night. Okay, and in my report, we attended intergovernmental meeting the other night, the three council members, Mr. Clary, Mr. Greasock, and Mr. Wilson, up at the high school, and we had two items there underneath my report, the tax delinquent plan and also the Gateway School District Security. The first one is the tax delinquent plan. Mr. Stupenport, who is here this evening, president of the school board, brought this to the attention of council about a tax plan, the school district, a delinquent tax plan a school district is moving ahead with, and council has a proposal that Mr. Stupenport brought here, I think it was late last year in December, and then you showed up subsequently, I think it was in February, Chad. But to distill the proposal, basically what the, the delinquent tax plan is, is to publish the delinquent taxpayers in a newspaper and other media outlets, and also take the top five to sheriff's cell, and the commensurate cost of going to sheriff's cell would be between the school district and municipality commensurate to their mileage rate. Am I correct, Chad?
80, 20.
Are me?
Yes, that part is correct. They will be published there on a payment plan.
Okay, and unless people were on a payment plan, as you were saying. So those are basically the two issues, and I want to just know if council had any dialogue, conversation, because this is the time...
Before we do that, I'd like Mr. Folgers, and if you'll come on up and talk about what we discussed.
Go, Pat.
Hi.
Hi.
Paint your name and address, please.
Who are you, by the way? All right, Pat, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
820.
820. Anyway, I think that, this is only in my recommendation, I talked to the mayor, I've talked to council, and I've talked to Mr. Little, and I think that we should take the politics out of this game plan and just start what we, what Chad and they would like to do. They would like to do the first five or first 10 of the highest and go to sheriff's cell. I think that's a great idea. I think you put them in the paper, said first 10, go for the paper, let them know that if they don't start paying, you're going to go to sheriff's cell, and then go to sheriff's cell. Be proactive.
You recommended this to us last month, or the month before?
Many months ago.
Yes.
Anyway, let's be proactive about the whole thing. I think, Chad, idea about going to sheriff's cells is a good idea. You'll get some of these people who have just laid back, and they've been living in their homes or their property without paying taxes. back and they've been living in their homes or their property without paying taxes. I think that's a good idea. I do not think to go out and put people's name in the paper is a good idea. I've seen that in churches way back.
You just said it was.
I didn't, no.
No, no, you mean...
The first 10, the first 10.
Oh.
Who you're taking to sheriff's cell should be in the paper. You should let them know that you are proactive. You're going after these people. And then after that, the next year, the next month, or the month after, do another five, do another 10. Just be proactive. We have not been proactive. We have talked about this. We have talked about this since November, and we haven't done a thing. Everybody wants to put names in a paper, for what? To embarrass somebody who might have hard times? You want to be the one who embarrassed somebody who is honest about their back taxes, they don't have the money to pay at that period of time, but they make good faith later on? Because eventually you will get the money from any home, because you will sell that home and they will pay the taxes in due time. Now, if you care about putting names in a paper, I don't want to be responsible for that. You can go right ahead, because I'm afraid that there will be names out there that they're good citizens and they happen to have hard times at that moment. Doesn't mean they're always delayed, always back taxes. But that's up to you. I'm only suggestion, suggesting that you do not do this. I think you go sheriff's cell, and I think you go proactive.
And you're the tax man, so I agree with what you said.
I, we're at 99, 98%. I'll give you an example. I gave you $190,000 last year, last month in February of delinquent taxes. I have collected, as you can see in that report, 88,000. So what is that, 110? $110,000 you didn't collect.
Out of?
Nine million, 200,000 dollars. So is it really, are you really doing some, or you just want to make the municipality hate each other? Do you want names out there and I can't wait to see my neighbor who didn't pay that particular time? That's up to you. That's yours, you know, you have the right to do. I would not do that. I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think it gives the community, you know...
I agree with you, Pat.
And that's up, that's wholly up to you. I'm just, I don't think it's a good thing in a community that we try to make love to each other, you know? This is supposed to be one community.
But I just have a question. I mean, even though, let's, let's say that, let's say that council...
First love everybody.
Passes a motion to move ahead with this proposal, like the school district, except for advertising all of the delinquent taxpayers. But the school district could still go ahead.
Oh, they have the right to do whatever they want. See how it comes out.
There you go.
Well, to clarify, I know Mr. Stupenport was speaking this from the, the back here, but to clarify, they don't, all the names don't automatically get put in the paper. They, they'd be forewarned, there'd be a letter that would go out, and people would have the...
We have done that.
People would have the opportunity to either make a payment plan...
We have done that.
Or, yeah, Chad, come on up. I just want to clarify this. So you come to bring up the point as far as someone being on hard times.
Sign in, Chad, state your name for the record.
Maybe I'll talk, speak to Chad.
Pat, outside of publishing the names, this whole thing is basically business as usual, except we've never really taken people to sheriff's cell.
We never have. We've been asking the school district to take people to sheriff's cell for the last 10 years. It's not a new thing. They, they declined to do it for the last 10 years because they didn't want to pay for it.
Thank you.
And, and they hear this news story, it's like, wow!
Every year that I've been on council, we've asked the school board to take them.
Oh, yeah, this is nothing.
Mr. Dice used to say, hey...
It's all, this is becoming a political arena. Everybody wants to jump on a bandwagon to make politics. It sounds like Trump to me, and I'm done with it. Thank you.
Pat, is, Pat, is there a, a risk when it goes to sheriff's cell that, that we could, you know, let's say we invested $6,000, and then they decide to come up with their back taxes, we lose the six grand?
No.
No, you get the money back.
No, you get the money back, Tom.
No, you don't. Excuse me. What happens is that you go to sheriff's cell, you pay $6,000. All of a sudden, somebody buys a piece of property off sheriff's cell, they pay $100 for it. You don't get any tax dollars.
Well, that's at the free and clear sale.
Yeah. They will, where we'll be.
But I, I think some of those higher value properties, it would not be sold at a free and clear sale.
No, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah. So you would get it back on that first sale?
On the first sale.
And two things, that's, so the $6,000 is the all-in cost for sheriff's sale?
Roughly.
Roughly.
And the district will be responsible for about 80%, if you look at the military, 20% versus 4%.
A thousand dollars of Monroeville paying, and 5,000 of the school district paying.
Right.
So, just to... At the bottom line, this council's been asking the school board to do this for years.
Well, if we can clear up a few bottom lines, it's okay.
Chad, speak to the, as far as the notification and things like that.
Yeah, so we brought this up, June 2nd of last year, there was a proposal by the school board to just publish all of the names. That was on the agenda. From there, we decided to table it, and this is where this tax plan came from. So we were just going to, the school board at that time had all intentions to just publish all the names if you didn't pay taxes. To Pat's point, we thought that was a horrible idea. So we tabled that, and we came up with this tax plan. With this tax plan, we give everyone ample time to get onto a payment plan. These payment plans are minimal. We're not trying to embarrass anyone, we're not trying to do anything like that. If you're on a payment plan, you don't get published. From that, we're just looking at the top five for sheriff's sale. To your point, if we go after a sheriff's sale of a house that's worth $50,000, and it's dilapidated and, you know, true market value might be $20,000, no, we're not going to get the money back for sheriff's sale. So we're going after the five, top five scofflaw offenders. If they're on a payment plan, we don't take anyone to sheriff's cell. So that would be best-case scenario. We send all these letters out, everyone says, okay, I, I don't want my business to go to sheriff's sale, and I don't want my name to be in a paper, so I'm going to get on a payment plan. That's all it's doing, is it's incentivizing. As far as asking the district to take people, any taxing body can take someone to sheriff's sale. So if anyone wanted to take anyone to sheriff's sale, they, they could do so on their own. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Isn't it put in the paper when you go to sheriff's cell?
Yes, it has to be publicly advertised.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, there were several comments this evening about the district should have taken people to sheriff's cell. Any taxing body can take someone to sheriff's cell. Council can take anyone to sheriff's.
Yeah, but I asked Mr. Dice about that, and he said the school district is the big winners on this. So they're the ones that have to start the process.
I'm not going to debate, I mean, I've been up here six, seven times now, and I've talked about this. If you guys want to do it, awesome. If you don't want to do it, awesome.
Yeah, but what he's saying is, is where you've been for the past 10 years?
Not him, but the school board.
He was there.
There's, there's people up there, you could ask about that. I wasn't on the school board 10 years ago. But to that point, I mean, the school board has already approved this. So it's moving forward. So we can debate it all you want. I, I'm not here to debate it, because the school board has already stood 9-0 in favor of this plan. If Ms. Pouty would like to have a partnership, we would welcome it. If not, we thank you for considering.
Tim, would we, would we address this as a resolution?
Yeah, I, I do believe that this should be passed as a resolution, so it is, that would be my belief, and Bob can...
Yeah, I agree with that.
And we could tweak it the way that we felt was agreeable amongst all of us.
Yeah, I agree with that.
If you guys just want to help pitch in towards, you know, the cost for sheriff's sale, we're not going to say no to that. If you guys don't want to pay for it.
Yeah, the school board has already passed, correct me if I'm wrong, they've already passed it that they will...
It's passed 9-0, yes.
No, that they will publish all of the delinquent taxpayers.
No, we passed the tax plan as it was presented multiple times here. Anyone that is not on a payment plan and has delinquent taxes will be published. If you're on a payment plan, if you're paying $10 a month, well, there's a big difference. There are a lot of people that owe delinquent taxes, and there's a lot of people that are on a payment plan. So if you're on a payment plan, making a good faith effort to pay the taxes, then we're fine. We're not going to, we're not trying to embarrass anyone, we're not trying to go after anyone. You know, I, I completely agree with Pat, too. Take the politics out of this, and this is what it does. It creates a systematic approach that we're not playing favorites, we're not playing what if, what if, what if, all these hypotheticals. We're clear, cut and dry. If you're on a payment plan, you don't get published.
All right, so safe to say, council, that it'll be a resolution on the agenda for Tuesday. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Fair statement?
I have a question for Chad, actually. Is there...
Isn't it correct, though, that if they go on sheriff's sale, it's publicly stated notice, it's a public notice?
Yeah, it is, yes.
It is in the paper.
At sheriff's cell.
Yeah, all this information is public knowledge. I mean, anyone...
And the other issue is that, I think what Mr. Harvey was trying to consider was that since the school district millage is higher than our millage, their participation in this is much greater than what our participation would be.
Correct. We would pay the lion's share. Our, our millage rate is five times your millage rate, so, well, not, well, yeah, just about five times.
Roughly, yeah. Chad, under your proposal, the, what's the timeframe from, say, notification to, how long do residents have to get on a payment plan before it's published? Have you guys decided, like, a timeframe as far as how much?
Yeah, the initial proposal was three to six months, so giving everyone three to six months to get onto a payment plan. Obviously, you know, we're waiting on Monroeville, so if you guys join on, you'll obviously have some say in that. If Pit Karen joins on, then they'll have some say in that. But we want to give ample time. We're not trying to rush this, we're not, trust me, I would rather us have zero people in the paper. You know, if we have zero people in the paper, that means everyone's paying taxes. You know, it, it sounds, when you look at the numbers, you said you had 190,000 in delinquent taxes, 80 of which was collected. So you still have over 50% outstanding. That's a large number. I mean, monetarily speaking, you might say, oh, 100,000, but it's over 50%. It's a large number. For the district, that's...
Nine point two million?
Nine point two million?
Or what do you, where do you...
You said the delinquent was...
190,000.
You said delinquent was 190,000, of which you collected 88.
So far. We're not even done with the year.
Okay.
Out of nine million.
Yeah, what do you, this is not...
No, I'm saying 188, 88 is back there.
I mean, this is not a major event. The delinquent taxes is not the major problem with the school district.
So, the district would like free money, we'd like to go after the money that's owed. If you guys don't, that's fine. It's, it's up to you guys.
Did you pass a resolution to this?
Resolution was passed 9-0.
Okay, can you email me a copy of it?
I can most efficiently do it.
Okay, if you could do that tomorrow, I'd much appreciate it.
I can do it, too.
Do you have my email address?
I do. I'll give it to you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next issue.
Okay, item number two. During the intergovernmental meeting, as most council members know, is that the school district is proposing a, a security with putting a armed guard in each of the buildings in the, each building in a Gateway School District. And they have asked us two questions. And the two questions in their proposal with respect to the council here is, our SRO, we split the cost with benefits and salary of $150,000, and we split the cost right now of $75,000 apiece. School district is requesting council if they would lower that to $50,000. That is, that's the first question. Is there any dialogue on that question at all right now, before we go to the second one?
Yeah. So, I got a lot of questions that we weren't allowed to ask at the intergovernmental meeting. So, we use the officer for three months out of the year, they use them for nine months out of year. The other thing that came out of that meeting, that Gateway is in the best financial shape that it's been in a long time, I believe were the words. And they're asking us for more money to support this. Trying to get this straight in my head. Is that correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay. That doesn't, this doesn't make sense, but, okay.
Does council have any other dialogue or questions on that that they want to ask?
Well, no, to that, I mean, to that point, I mean, I would agree, yes. The nine months out of the year, two to three months, that's a 75%, 25% breakdown. Actually, as we were talking about the tax delinquent, I think, delinquency issue, the millage rates, 19.36 for your school district tax, four mils for your municipality of Monroeville tax, the math there is roughly 17%. So every dollar that a taxpayer pays that goes towards real estate for your Monroeville and Gateway, we won't talk about the county for now, we won't talk about Pit Karen for now, but Monroeville residents who pay money that goes to the school district and to the municipality, it is a 17% to 83% breakdown as far as where your tax dollar goes. Now, all that aside, I think as far as us paying 50% for an SRO, I think it's pretty fair from our end.
Extremely generous.
Very.
I think, I think the SRO provides a, a great service to the community, not only for the school itself, for the, for the, you know, outside threats to a school, potential outside threats, but, you know, internally, as far as the relationships that an SRO develops with these, these kids, long-term. Certainly, this isn't the form, or we're not, this body isn't, shouldn't, shouldn't agree or disagree with whatever their plan is to, to put guards in all the schools, because that's the school district's decision, and we can't, as residents, speak to that. But really, the question is just the financing part of it. I think, I think we should continue paying what we've been paying, the 50% for Officer Candrak's wages and salary, and keep him over there at the high school.
So, I guess I'll ask you, Nick, just because you were at the meeting, too. If we don't give the extra $20,000, are they...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, are they going to get rid of the SRO?
I think that's a school district question. I would hope that in their $72 million budget, that the 25,000 wouldn't be a, a deal breaker for the SRO, and they'd be able to find out a way to work that into their budget.
I'm just thinking, as a parent, you know, that SRO's been there for 13 years, has developed a lot of good relationships with the kids, and I think that's more important than a, more of a military state. I believe in the security, in the security of our kids, but to kind of that point, for 25,000, I don't want this to break the deal. I think he does a good job, and I find a lot of benefit in it. And I, I just don't want that to be a deal breaker. I agree with you, out of a $72 million budget, 25,000 isn't a lot. Our budget isn't near that. You took our budget and Pen Hill's budget, put it together, or Pit Karen, put it together, it's not near that. And I'll just say, and I felt a little, that it was almost posed as a threat, that, hey, if you don't pony up, we're getting rid of them. I didn't care for that too much.
And once again, it's all, it all, either way, it is all taxpayer dollars. It's all residents' money, one way or the other. You know, your, your district, your money goes to the district or the municipality. But I think the breakdown that we have right now is, is fair on our, on our part, the 50%.
I agree.
I don't know if anyone else wants to speak?
Anybody else have comments, council?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
No, sir.
So, I mean, I don't think a, next Tuesday, and because the status quo is right now, we're providing an SRO at 50% of the cost to the school district. I don't, you know, nothing needs to be done legislatively next Tuesday. So what I'm hearing is that council wants to keep the status quo with the SRO.
Is that a fair statement, council?
It's fair, as far as I'm concerned.
Is it a fair statement, council? Very good.
Okay. All right, the, the second question that was, was brought up was that could the, could the municipality have a, I want to use the special school police, which is under our Home Rule Charter. And I'll read that. It says, "The municipal manager with the advising incentive council may appoint a special school police who shall have the duty of controlling indirect traffic and providing for public safety at or near schools and churches, and who shall be in uniform and when on duty shall be vested with all powers of the municipal police officers. Such police shall serve at the pleasure of the council and shall not come within the career service and personnel provisions of the charter, nor shall they be eligible to join any police pension fund maintained for municipal police." Now, our solicitor, Bob Ratcher, has given an opinion on this, because right now, we're in the middle of a Home Rule Charter revision, and he's given an opinion to them and several council members. But I'll turn it over to him as far as the offer's opinion on that, on that item.
Well, my opinion is that I don't think that particular provision, it's an old provision taken from an, an old provision in the borough code. It was inserted into the Home Rule Charter. It is, in fact, an operable provision in the Home Rule Charter right now. But when we reviewed it on the Home Rule Charter Committee, I think everybody came to the conclusion, and certainly my legal opinion is, is that that provision was never intended, I think, to do what the school district is contemplating doing. I think it was more in tune with school crossing guards, something of that ilk, as opposed to police officers who were actually in the schools. So, so my opinion is, is that it would not be in the municipality's interest to create a force under that particular provision. Now, there are other provisions that the school district can create a police force with, but that particular provision I don't think is appropriate for the municipality.
Okay, anything else here?
Any other questions from council or anything?
Okay.
Up to him, he runs the meeting.
Let's get to the, our, Tom, we're going to start off with you.
Wait, I have one, one other.
Joe, I'm, I'm going to, one second.
I just have one other item under my report.
Oh, I didn't know that, I'm sorry.
Just to let council know, we received the agreement from Paschek and Associates, which would be the, the consultant to be doing the update of the comprehensive plan in which we're doing in conjunction with Wilkins Township and Churchill. I gave you a handout there as far as what Paschek would be doing. And a comprehensive plan usually takes 18 months, two years. We have two years under the, under the grant that we got from the county in order to do this. I just wanted to let council know about that and keep them abreast of what we're going to be doing, what Paschek and Associates is going to be doing, and that's contained within the handout I gave you.
Questions or comments on that, council? All right, now we'll go to reports of the officials, and Tom, we'll start off with you.
Joe, I'm going to defer the shelter till Tuesday, but I'd like to bring up the photographs of Garden City entrances, please. Okay, this is the Garden City entrance at Old William Penn Highway and Garden City Drive. And one of our residents, Beverly Reinhardt, has been so kind in taking care of the, providing the flowers, planting the flowers, watering the flowers, and doing a terrific job at this entrance. How about the other entrance, Laurel Drive, Joe? There's Laurel Drive. Somebody was kind enough to miss that bend and take down the signs, so we put up a new sign, and...
Looks good, it really does.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it looks terrific, Bev, thank you. And how about Center Road and Garden City Drive, Joe?
Tom, there was no flowers.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Son of a gun, huh? We missed that, yeah.
Is that it, Tom?
Looks good.
Okay. But anyway, Beverly, thank you so much. You make our Ward 7 look beautiful. Thanks again.
Steve?
Go Pens.
Oh, go Pens, yeah.
Paul?
I'll go Pens.
Jim?
I have a lot, but I'll just, real quick, I'll do most of it on Tuesday. The Monroeville Convention Center tomorrow and Saturday has a wine festival and comedy show.
Cornhole.
That's coming. The, our fireworks and parade committee had another meeting last night, we have a lot going on, I wanna thank, we got twenty dedicated volunteers that are doing a lot to make it happen, and I will tell everybody what we're doing on Tuesday, go Pens.
And you can also get that put online if you'd like.
I will do that, thank you.
Ron?
Go Pens, I'll wait till Tuesday.
Yes, Mayor, Joe, if you could bring up the pool pictures, please, if you have them down there. Very good, the Monroeville Community Pool is open, the number is seen here at the bottom, four one two three seven two six one one zero, they're open for business, we're open for a nice warm summer, just to give some compliments to John Hizzy, John Float, and Joe Urban, some Public Works guys, who really did a great job with the pool, and it looks great, they really did a great job, and hopefully for, we're gonna have a nice hot summer, but for pool memberships, you can call that number below, also, you can stop into the Recreation Department, they have flyers, which explains everything, there's also daily rates too for residents and non-residents to get down and to enjoy the Bel Air Pool, so get out there this summer. And to speak a little bit more about Public Works, there was a, there was a nice letter to the editor, I don't have it in front of me a couple weeks ago, about the gentleman that all work in the community park, and how well of a job they do, and, but, they, the gentleman who wrote the letter failed to mention Mr. Hizzy, who's the foreman over there, and probably because not only is John there, but he's everywhere else, and he's probably never in one place for too long, but he does a super job as well at the community park, and, but all the staff really does at the community park, and the Parks Crew in general, now that the summer is moving along, and the parks all look pretty good. Some other things in the Recreation Department, the Summer Concert Series starts up here with the, sponsored by UPMC East, and presented by the municipality of Monroeville, June 12th, which will be this Sunday, is The Holidays, they're an oldies band, six thirty to eight thirty at the Tall Trees Amphitheater, so come out and hear The Holidays play. And school is out, as everyone knows, some things that are available through the Recreation Department are their summer day camps, pick up the flyer, it was mailed to every household, but it's also available here at the municipality, probably the library as well, there's a couple pages of summer day camps that your kids can join in on, and, and get out and do some things in the summer, my daughter's in one of them, and she's having a great time, they were at the zoo today, and all the kids seem to, to love it. And lastly here, sticking on the same theme of Public Works and Recreation Department, just a quick tip of the hat to a Public Works employee, John Mazak, people know him as Duke, Duke actually, through the Recreation Department, is coaching the, the head coach of the girls' softball team, ten and under, and just wanna say, Duke's doing a super job this year, and did a great job with the girls, along there, a lot of other parent help and other coaches, actually, Mr. Clary, parent, we'll call him a base coach.
Base coach.
Didn't get fired over the season, so he did, he did pretty good, but Duke Mazak, tip of the hat to him, and Nepal certainly as well, for doing a great job for one of the Recreation Department programs, and that's all I have for this evening.
Linda?
I just wanna welcome Blaze Pizza, they're opened, their opening is this, today and